Let me, and let me quit being teaching. Probably not swiping into you. Okay, we are going to call the regular meeting of the Cedar Springs City Council to order at 7:06 PM, Thursday, April 13th, 2023. Please rise and say the pledge with me. I pledge allegiance to the republic of America. I'm going to call the roll, Ms. Atchison.
Here.
Mr. Gross.
Here.
Ms. Hamel.
Present.
Ms. Nixon. Ms. Powell.
Here.
Ms. Race.
Here.
And Mayor Conley is here. At this time, we will move on to public comments. The council welcomes and encourages the public to speak during the public comment and public hearing portions of the agenda. However, council policy is to hear the public comment, not to act on the public comment at this time. Concerns brought before the council during the public comment portion of the agenda will be referred to the city manager for action. If after communicating with the city manager, no resolution is reached, the concern will be elevated to the mayor and eventually to the council for action. Those citizens wishing to speak on agenda or non-agenda items will be allowed a maximum of four minutes each to address their concerns. This is the only time during the council meeting that citizens are allowed to address the council. Please state your name and address for the record if you would like, and if you would like a response. Let me get my timer up. Okay, anyone wishing to speak?
I guess I'll start the show. Been here before. I've said most of this before. You're obviously not listening. Regarding this Solon Township Agreement with Cedar, Cedar, City of Cedar Springs, regarding the library. This library, when it was built, was built by the surrounding area citizens and mostly completely public funds. It was built with the idea that it was to be a community library. I would like to see it continue to be a community library. I have heard that this is about money, that the library needs money. I would like to know why, if this is about money, the complete millage that was passed last was not given to the library. If this is about money, where is that money? Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hey, Janielski, I'm representing Solon Township Board today. Not long ago, Mr. Bob Elick sent the council letter asking why the rush. Today, we're asking the same question along with a request to not withdraw from our longstanding community partnership with the library. Two reasons, one, there's a transition going on with the new city manager trying to be replaced here, and the new library board just began. So we ask you to pause for at least a couple of months before even considering such action and what kind of repercussions it would have within the community. Thank you.
It's easier for you to speak from your chair, you can.
Earl Alver, first of all, I'd like to talk about sidewalk project and how this has been mishandled right from the very beginning. There should have been a meeting of the property owners to explain to us what was going on instead of a generic letter that said you may or may not lose your trees and the project was going to start on March 31st, which it didn't. It started on the Monday before that. And I also want to tell you that most of them, that there are people who did not receive those letters that live on these streets. Um, the neighbor across the street got mine. So she has one. The right hand didn't know what the left hand was doing. I granted an easement as well as the neighbor granted an easement for the sidewalks to go around our trees that we fought and saved for. Fishback and Andland didn't know about the easements. And thank goodness that I had insisted on getting a piece of, a copy of what I had signed. I took it out to them. So they went around my tree. There was also no plan for those of us that sit in the middle of the, of the blocks for how we were going to get in and out of our homes. The couple next door had to lift their children over a fence and then try to figure out how they themselves were going to get into their property. That's my first thing. Now about the library. The mayor says she has no agenda regarding KDL, but appears that's a lie. Why would you put the library in more financial straits by dissolving the contract? It makes no sense to me except that you are forcing the people to go with KDL. I will campaign long and hard against it. Now, forty-three percent of the library's current funds come from Solon Township. And you have to stop comparing the mills. You have to look at what each entity is giving. Solons is forty-three percent. And I'm asking you to really stop and think about this and vote no.
Hello, my name's Andrew Thompson. Not a frequent flyer here yet. Afraid I'm going to become one. Um, I, I, I understand where you're coming from on the tax base and the budget. I also appreciate where the city manager and council were coming from of trying to protect individual taxpayers for the mills. Um, I'm concerned a third option hasn't been considered, which is by increasing the tax base or the number of people it's been spread across that it could be reduced for the city residents while still maintaining the budget of the library. So there's a third option that I've heard, quite frankly, nobody consider. My next one is, is I have concerns about us canceling the contract right now. Uh, in particular, what if Solon declines to re-up in a new one? I believe forty-three percent of the budget is at risk then. So I'd like us to, to maybe spend a little bit more time negotiating first and knowing what the answer is going to be coming out of it before rushing to start the six-month timer on the cancellation. Last one is, as it relates to KDL, I feel as though the, the city council is enjoying flexing some of their control and power over the library. Cool, good. I want representatives trying to represent me in these things. However, I wonder if it's, there's been a lot of thought and consideration to, there will not be a flexibility of power with KDL. They only have an advisory board. They will do what they want to. You will be in a fifteen-year contract. There are not easy outs. And so a lot of the oversight and caring that I've seen from this council, quite frankly, won't matter to KDL. This reminds me a lot of when we decided to contract out our city police force. No offense, Kent County people are great too. But we did it to save money, to address budgets. My response time has gone up. I'm hoping maybe it goes down when we get the North Transfer Station. But I seem to remember a lot of things with Red Flannel where it was devil in the details. That wasn't covered. It was just covered before. I think there's a lot of details in the budgets and entities and not having control that have not been fully vetted out with doing the KDL. The last, the least, not the least of which is, I heard the KDL representatives say we'd be able to keep our staff and use the same staff in the same capacity, yet I also hear that our staff needs to have a degree that cannot be achieved within that timeframe to do the same thing. So either please, somebody correct me later on, on that fact. But it doesn't sound like they're necessarily honoring all of that, not because they're being dishonest, but because there's a lot of details to work out. And I would really like to see a little bit more runway and, and due diligence. Thank you.
Uh, yes, my name's Charlie Curtis, uh, live on Twelve Mile. And I have some questions of the underlying motivations that are causing actions that the board is taking. And the last time I was, the last time I was here, I had the unfortunate circumstance to observe a kangaroo court that attempted to malign and, and throw off Mary, Mary Evelyn Vu from the board for absolutely no malfeasance. And it was you guys that were the ones that were committing malfeasance on this board. And that causes me to have a great distrust of anything you're doing at this point in time. And I would caution you about your actions to make sure that they are in line with what the people of this community, they, they elected you to represent them, not to power your way into what you want or what you think is right, but they elected you to represent the people of this community. And I would just caution you that I have, what I observed last time at, at this kangaroo court, what was, was a horrible thing. It was, it was malfeasance beyond what I have ever seen in a local board. And I, I would, I would ask you to consider your ways and to do what's right for this community, not what you want. And to take the time and the effort that it takes to be, to be a consensus building board rather than a divisive board, which is what I see at this point from what limited, I agree, uh, you know, opportunity to observe. But what I observed last time was, was not a good thing. It was a, it is a very dark day on this board for what happened last time that, that I was here. And I would just encourage you to think about that and to consider your ways and to do what's right. And, and whatever the votes are, I'm, you know, I'm not going to pressure any one way or another for a vote. But I would, but you need to live according to your consciences and, and not according to some sort of agenda that's, that's hatched in, in private, uh, that, that the rest of this community doesn't even know about, and then come up with quote unquote, solutions that are voted on that, that the community really doesn't understand what's going on. So that's my encouragement to this board. Do what's right. Represent your people. Don't, don't malign innocent people to try to get your way to reduce the, a person on the board that does, may not want KDL. Do the, do, you know, do the, do what's right. That's all I got to say.
Anyone else?
Perry Hopkins, ninety North Main Street. Just for clarification, right? How many people do we have here from Cedar Springs, uh, looking to separate from Solon Township on this library thing? And how many of them are here for staying with it? It's just something we want to look at. Uh, our community as well as Solon community worked hard on this library for it to be the way it is. Guy named Morley, who built the building that my business is in, he also donated the property to the villages of Cedar Springs for Morley Park. And his vision for Morley Park is very far from what it is now. In his letter that he left it to the city, there was never to be a child in that park. It's not that he hated children. He wanted a park for adults to be able to go and have some peace and time on their own. Well, after he's long and gone, nobody fought for what he donated that to the city for, and then they went and did what they wanted because it was easy access. So we want to take in consideration as we do things. I know nobody here was around at that time to make them decisions. But if we're going to keep taking what people give to the city and turn it around for what we want to use it for because it's easy access, people may not want to continue to make things happen. All the advancements in this last decade, probably ninety percent of it has been done through volunteerism and donations through people with their, the goodness of their hearts to make this community grow. And so if we keep slapping that in the face, why do people want to continue to give to this community? And why do they want to continue to make it advance and grow? If all we're going to do is kick them in the behind. And I've said with a lot of these things happening, what people do to each other over these volunteer boards, we're all volunteers. Can you imagine if we got paid, how much people would stick each other in the back over that?
All right, I'm Kurt Maybe. I'm, uh, to say the least disappointed. Not at any one particular group, but because we're trying to make each other adversaries against each other. All of you, most of you have been on the board since how many years now? We've worked together to share a vision that the city had, the community had. And now we're putting, trying to put each other against each other. It's not what we've worked so hard for. It seemed like we'd learned historically in the past where different groups are against the city and the city goes no place. We've got to continue looking at the vision. You know, in my ten years being with the CBDT, I have yet to run into anybody that stood right in front of my face and said, no, I'm not willing to talk to you. Everybody's really willing to talk. How do we approach them? If I approach you attacking you, you're not going to be very open to it. Solon Township has been a huge part of what's been going on in Cedar Springs. There's a lot of people that have donated their time and efforts into the projects in Cedar. Please keep them in mind. Please keep community in mind. Don't make it an adversary. We don't need any more of that stuff. It took us long enough to get that emblem back on the wall. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else? Hearing none, is there anyone on Zoom?
There is, it looks like Kami Howell has her hand raised. Go ahead, Ms. Howell.
Good evening, everyone. How are you?
Good.
Good, I'm glad to be with you this evening. My name is Kami. I am the library director. It's great to see everyone's passionate about the library. It's very exciting. So I am here to share with you all what happened at the library during the month of March and a few things that will be happening this month and into May. So we had one hundred and forty-one kiddos attend storytime and one hundred and two adults. We had a first grade family glow party as a library card drive, and there was a hundred and fifteen participants. For teens and tweens, we had a DIY neon sign. And there were ten participants for that. The Library of Michigan runs an online teen library quest program, and our library had one winner. For family programs, we had reading with Flicka, which is a Shetland pony. And yes, it was a live pony that came. And there were twenty participants who came and read with Flicka. Uh, WZZM thirteen was there participating in that event with us. We also had a seed starting workshop with twenty-five participants. This is our second year doing a seed library, so a library within the library. And we actually are almost out of seeds. So this has been a very popular addition to the library. Not my doing, this was all by staff members. We had six attend the writers' group. We had an interactive storytime for adults that six attended. We had eight for book club, thirty-five donors at the blood drive, eighty-one attend our crafter nooners, and a hundred and nineteen attend the enhanced fitness class. We had nine participants in the Biggest Loser weight competition. And the winner lost eleven point ninety-eight percent of their weight. We had a scavenger hunt and there were sixty-five participants. Coming up in the next few weeks, we have a style program with the new women's lifestyle company in town, Reva Jane. We also have an intergenerational tea coming the weekend of Mother's Day. So come on out, everyone, and have tea with us.
Thank you, Kami.
Thank you.
Do you want to have any questions for Kami on the board? I know we don't normally do that for public comment, but Kami is special. Thank you.
You're welcome.
If there's anyone else online that would like to make a public comment, please raise your hand or unmute yourself. It appears Karen is, nope, sorry, she's not unmuted. Any other public comment on Zoom?
Being done. Okay.
We do have a hand raising, the audience, if you want to.
Um, I, I think you've spoke. Okay. Sure, come on up.
I just want to know how much of that would have been available to be done without Solon Township's funding. Thank you.
Hey, anyone else?
I want to know why the rules are different, why they don't apply to everyone.
Ma'am, the mayor is the chairperson and she has the ability to allow additional public comment if she would like. That's what's written into the rule.
I think the mayor pro temp could also verify that I actually had a timer going. And it was within the four minutes. I also know it is difficult for people on Zoom to see my fingers. So I would probably give a verbal prompt. Anyone else? No one else on Zoom? Hearing none? We will move on the agenda. We don't have any public hearings. So the adoption of the agenda, we have there was an amendment. Yes, um.
I asked for an amendment to modify item six A to add the approval of the special meeting minutes from March sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, that was included in your packet, however, it did not make.
We didn't make that, yeah. So do you need a motion for that?
Yeah, it would be a part of your motion to adopt the agenda.
Okay, so, so I need a motion to adopt the agenda with that modifying item for six A?
I would make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented with the modification of adding six A as stated.
And then I also sent you an email today on adding a motion seven G as an action item to appoint the financier director Darla Falcon is the interim city manager for ninety days with compensation to be determined by consultation with MML and the city attorney and the mayor, I think.
I would amend my motion to include that.
Okay.
Support.
Any discussion? Do you need a roll call on that, Ms. Johnson?
Be best thinking.
Hey, Ms. Atchison.
Yes.
Mr. Gross.
Yes.
Ms. Hamel.
Yes.
Ms. Nixon.
Yes.
Ms. Powell.
Yes.
Ms. Race.
Yes.
Mayor Conley votes yes, so we have an agenda. Moving on to the consent agenda. Council members may request that any or all items be removed from the consent agenda. A motion is then in order to adopt all items not removed from the consent agenda. Requesting the removal of an item from the consent agenda is prerogative afforded each council member and does not require the support of other council members. Do I have a motion? Well, first, is there anything anyone wants removed? Hey, do I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Any discussion? Hey, uh, because we have money involved with this, I'll do a roll call. Rose.
Yes.
Lisa.
Yes.
Molly.
Yes.
Uh, Ashley.
Yes.
Renee.
Yes.
Jerry.
Yes.
And Mayor Conley votes yes. Moving on to action items. A motion to cancel the library services agreement with Solon Township and notify the Solon Township Board of the Cedar Springs Public Library Board of the cancellation that would be effective October thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. So it's, um, I talked to Ms. Powell about this, that we might want to change the language of the motion slightly.
And did we?
Well, I, not at the moment, because that was an hour ago, we had that conversation.
What would you like to change?
Um, that we wanted to make the language to start. We're basically starting, starting the clock on the six-month notification. To make it clear, we weren't sure that it was clear that we want to continue to negotiate. And that we have an offer on the table. I think we actually have two offers on the table that have not been addressed. But I'm not sure. Tell me how you would like that motion worded.
Well, I, I really couldn't tell you exactly. I think, um, we want, the gist of it was to start the clock and so we will have six months to discuss all this. Because, um, at a, the last library board meeting I was at, and, um, someone asked about how Mr. Aniliski told us that we couldn't do anything. We had, the city and the township had signed a contract and that was the contract we had to abide to. And the only way we could negotiate a new contract was to cancel the existing contract. So that's where we're at.
So do you feel, so before we can get into our discussion, we need a motion in a second. Do you feel comfortable with the language that's in the motion right now?
I would say motion to cancel the library services agreement at six months while we continue to negotiate the, a new contract. Does that make sense?
Does that work for a motion?
Mayor, if I could, and just to continue the rest of the motion as written.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Does that make sense?
Does that work for you, Ms. Johnson?
We have the motion of Ms. Atchison stated.
Okay, does that work for you, Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
I would second.
Hey, any discussions now that we have a motion and a second on the table? And I suspect we will have a lot of discussion. Ms. Powell, you would like to start with the, he's, oh, I'm sorry, would you like to start?
I just like, I want to make sure what I just heard.
Okay.
This is not a cancellation.
Right.
It's a notification of cancellation in six months.
Correct.
Okay. That's.
I don't, I think I'm confused. Six months from today.
Correct.
It will be canceled.
Unless, we are not doing six months from today, we're giving six months notice of cancellation. No, it's six months from today if we do not have a new.
So we are giving notice of a cancellation under the contract that says that it actually isn't effective until six months from now.
Correct.
Okay.
That's, that was the same question I was asking. If we're giving a cancellation notice now.
Yes.
But it's continued upon six months of negotiation.
Correct.
Does that then meet the standards that are required to cancel the agreement in order to go into negotiation?
And Mayor, so the way I, I plan on structuring.
You're, you're going to have to be quiet.
The way I tried to structure and I worked with the city attorney on this, obviously.
Yeah, we've had a lot of attorney conversations last week.
Is, again, as Ms. Powell indicated, Solon seems to be under the. Is, again, as Ms. Powell indicated, um, Solon seems to be under the impression that we have a contract and they're not going to do anything different because we have a contract. So under that contract, we have to give them six months written notice of our intent to cancel. Now, of course, as you guys see in part B here, uh, we've already put together at least a draft for a new contract, continue these library services. Because I want to, I'm assuming most of you guys want to, if not all of you want to, continue to provide Solon Township with these services. Um, but right now, city residents are paying triple the rate, triple the rate of Solon Township residents for the same service. Um, and that is just not sustainable.
Yeah. Uh. Hey, we're not doing it.
Comment time, thank you.
We're not doing it.
So the way I presented it, I, I believe will work as at least it sounds like the board wants. We notified them of the intent to cancel. And we have six months to negotiate a new contract. If we negotiate a new contract, great. If we can't, then six months from now, they don't have a library service.
So that was, but Ms. Powell wanted to make sure that it was clear that the intent is to try to continue to negotiate.
Yes.
Does that intention have to be in the motion for us to be able to negotiate outside of it?
She wanted it.
Just wants to be.
She wanted it to be.
Which is fine, I just wasn't, that was my face, Lisa. I just want to know.
But no, no, that, I mean, that's.
We are allowed to negotiate if we don't put that in the motion.
Yes.
Okay.
She wanted.
It's extra clear.
And, and I'm speaking for you, I'm putting words in your mouth, but we had quite a lengthy conversation. Um, so she wanted to make sure that it was clear that that was our intent.
Correct. Now, like, if you read that one motion, you can see that it, what it goes to.
Right, so if I can offer a clarifying statement.
Please.
So perhaps a, a way to phrase this well would be a motion to cancel the library services agreement with Solon Township, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. With the hope of beginning a new contract October fourteenth of twenty twenty-three. Would that suffice?
Yep.
I would amend my motion.
Before you do that, so you've negotiated a contract to start at any time, as far as I'm concerned. It doesn't have to start on October fourteenth.
Okay.
So I, I appreciate what you're saying, but I, I don't think aid is necessary.
Okay.
And I mean, frankly, we're discussing this in public. It's being recorded. Uh, I know that sometimes just the facts, ma'am, is not always the way to convey the message to the public. Um, but hopefully the public's getting the fact that we want to negotiate, we want to do something. Uh, but we've been told without canceling, it's not going to happen. So um, I think it's a fair statement at this point that our intent is clear. I don't know if we need to change the motion.
So if Solon Township and Cedar Springs can get to an agreement in July, that contract can start in July, even though this one hasn't timed out the six months?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you could write the contract at that point to say, starting on October thirteenth, you could say it starts July, as long as both parties go along with it.
That nullifies the previous agreement.
Yeah.
Okay, so do we have a motion and are we good on the motion to begin discussion? Yes, yes.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, no, no. Ms. Powell?
Yes. Well, like I said, and it's the truth, and there were some librarians that, there that heard AJ say the city signed that contract, the one in two thousand seventeen.
Mm-hmm.
And that is the contract that we have to abide by. So now we are here to say we want to represent our citizens that live here that are paying three times the uh, mills as Solon citizens. And we want to negotiate something more reasonable for the people that live in the city.
Okay, anything else? I, I can go down there or we can kind of ping pong. You all tell me how you want to do it.
Just put me on the list. I don't care who goes next.
Okay, anything else on that?
No.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so a, a couple of clarifying things that I, I kind of took notes while some folks were, um, speaking in public comment, because I think there's a there's a little confusion, um, because there's a lot going on. Um, so over and over, I have heard, um, citizens of both municipalities say it's very important that we keep our current staff. It's, it's, I don't, and, and no one is necessarily opposed. Um, where I think we run into some confusion is that, um, a, that third proposal that someone had brought up about, uh, bringing in another municipality with additional, yes, with additional, um, with additional citizens who would then be served by our library. Under the law, if that were the option that were taken, um, our current library director would have six months to attain a master's degree.
A specific master's degree. She has a master's.
Correct. In any case, it would, it would, it's, I cannot fathom doing that in six months. And given that both municipalities have stated this is of value, um, that did rather take that off the table.
Yeah.
Um, so additionally, um, I fully appreciate that this is a, a truly a community library.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that, you know, Solon residents do, um, make up fifty-seven percent of its use, according to what I understood. Um, all sixty-five hundred of them, which make up forty-three percent of the, um, library's budget. And the, let me see, roughly thirty-six hundred residents of Cedar Springs make up fifty-seven percent of the library's budget. And if it's, um, the opinion of the board, the library board, that, um, they do not feel they have an option to increase the revenue from their side to meet needs and to grow our library uh, within the structure of our current contract, then here we are, and, and we have an offer on the table, because nobody wants to kick anybody out of the library. We all worked very hard.
And the offer we have on the table is incremental.
Indeed, indeed, because no one wants to triple their tax rate all at one time. That's a tough pill to swallow. Um, so uh, the other, the other thought on that. Goodness, so sorry, I lost where I was. Yes, in any case, um, we want to work with Solon. We, we absolutely do. We, we have a proposed path forward. Um, oh, and, and you know, we had understood the law to say that the Solon Township Board absolutely could raise by vote of their electors up to one mill um, without even a vote of their citizens to support the library. Um, that was also our attorney's, uh, position.
It's also the library, the library has hired an independent attorney.
Okay.
And that's in our email today. I.
Yes, I did see that. Um, so in any case, um, for whatever reason that did not happen, whether they were unaware or didn't think that was accurate, regardless. Um, you know, we're, we're here now to try to, um, fund our library, um, in a way that is equitable and sustainable and does not, um, take our current staff. My ADD is not going to allow me to follow along with you. I'm just going to say.
I'm too, I'm too, uh, too much support teacher with my highlighter.
Yep. So, um, yes. Oh, so this is, this is the structure that we have to attempt to go forward and, and you know, we have lots of reasons for how we may negotiate any particular contract, but that's sort of how we landed here. That makes sense. Okay.
Anyone else? I can jump in, but I want to give you all.
Yeah.
Opportunity.
Um, once again, I always say this. There's not a black, it's not black and white, it's gray. And I tend to live in the gray. And I can see both sides. But if you want one thing, you have to be willing to give something else to get it. You can't stand solidly on wanting the library to stay a community library, and then in the other breath, say you don't want to give any more support for it, and while you're on the board, vote to give more money from the other community and not give it from yours. If we're going to be a community library and we're going to be in this together, then we have to begin in it together, and I'm looking out for my community of Cedar Springs, and I don't want them to be paying tons more for a library that we're allowing another community to use. Um. We do want to keep an agreement with Solon Township. We do want to keep the library running as it is. Well, you know, and this is what we are, you know, this is what we've been told we need to do to be able to negotiate, so that's where we are. And I'm not saying whether, and, and this is not a KDL issue right now. Because I can tell you right now, I'm not even sure where I stand on that issue. I haven't been able to go into and, and investigate that issue, because that's not even what we're talking about right now. We're talking about the library that exists right now. And with my whole heart, I believe in that library, and I want it to stay that way. It was a great thing to get that building that we got. Um, it's an awesome building, it's an awesome library, and we do so many good things. And I want it to stay that way, and I want it to stay where both communities can live in harmony and use the library and, and use it well. Um, I guess I'm a little taken aback again. So we represent Cedar Springs, we were elected by Cedar Springs. Um, and not Solon Township, that doesn't mean that we don't have like a relationship with each other. Um, so I guess for me, the canceling of the contract and doing a negotiation really doesn't do anything much, because if Solon Township still wants to negotiate or have that agreement, then that is totally fine, and I'm one thousand percent open to that. If Cedar Springs residents are fine with paying triple, then please send it to my inbox. Not Solon Township. I represent Cedar Springs. So anybody, spread the word, Cedar Springs citizens. If you do not agree with having it be more equal, and you are totally fine with paying more, then let me know, and then that is what I will be advocating for, because of that, at this point, it makes no sense to me. To have it flipped, we pay for, uh, we use forty percent and pay sixty percent, or whatever the, the ish numbers are.
Mm-hmm.
If, if that is what makes sense to you, and I should be advocating for that, then let me know. At this point, that's my, uh, position.
There's, I'm going to add one little piece to that.
Sure.
Um, we are paying as citizens of Cedar Springs so much more, because we, as a board, in part, we were already paying more. We then voted to pay even more, because the library was going underwater.
Correct.
And we, as a board, were able to vote to do that. And we did, because we wanted to ensure that the library could continue to function. And even with doing that, it's not enough. They're at a twenty-two thousand dollar deficit for the budget.
Honestly, to me, that department doesn't, that makes it worse, but even if it is totally funded, fine, as it is, and we're totally balanced, it still doesn't make any sense to me.
Right.
So.
I don't disagree, but I'm saying.
If there's anybody that is going to say that I represent them, and they want me to represent their view, that is what I was elected to do.
I agree.
But I need to know that, because I'm telling you right now, I've not heard that one single time from anybody in Cedar Springs who has talked to me about the numbers of it.
Are you okay?
Oh my goodness, I'm so sorry, that is.
Is that an emergency?
Isn't, no, it's far more embarrassing than that. It's my alarm that should have gone off this morning.
Um, I've not heard from anybody from Cedar Springs who has talked to me about the numbers and said, like, nope, I think we should be paying sixty percent of it. It shouldn't be equal. For whatever reason, I honestly don't care what the reason is. Tell me, we'll talk about it, and then I will be able to advocate for you. At this point, I'm not advocating for that, because it doesn't make sense to me. I've not heard otherwise.
Anything else?
No, I think that's it.
Renee?
There is a lot to this, of course.
Mm-hmm.
Um. Have as someone that's communicating with Solon or AJ or whatever, have you guys talked about any of this negotiation or together at all?
We, we actually, oh gosh, okay, so we sent the letter in December, which we, by the way, it was, it was in our.
That was with another chairperson, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that wasn't with AJ.
He's only been here for three weeks.
Okay.
And it was with the township.
Yeah, because this is about the township, not the library board. And AJ is the chair of the library board, but he's the treasurer of the township. So he's, he's speaking on behalf of the township. So in December, we sent a letter to them saying, the library's going underwater. There isn't enough money. We need you to look at how much you're, you're contributing. The city is contributing extensively more. We've actually increased our own taxes to try to support the library. We need you to look at this. That was in December. And then they responded in February, right? Which was also in our, where they basically said, we think we should go to Algoma, and we don't think we should pay anymore. I mean, I have the letter. I, which we was at our council meeting, right?
So these are, I mean, they're written down.
Mm-hmm.
And I hear people go, that's not true. That's not true.
It, it's.
But it's there.
This is signed by Bob Elick. And I'm told, I believe you were at their meeting?
Which one?
The one, the one where they, where they presented this.
Uh, if I can see that. I know, I know he read a letter. I'm not quite sure if this is the one or not.
That's the one they sent to us, and then we added it to our agenda as their response, and we'd sent our initial response in December.
Yes, that's one.
Yeah, I mean, so this is, I mean, so that was February.
Right. Again, so AJ's, um, was confronted apparently about this contract, or, okay.
At the library board meeting, if I can interject, so at the library board.
Might clarification, because this is very.
Sure, at the library board meeting, because I was at the same meeting.
And he was there, correct? This was last.
He is now the chair of the library board.
Okay, but were you at that meeting?
He was the chair for that meeting.
Okay.
First meeting he was the chair at.
Check it.
It's all good.
Okay.
So Rose, since you're the one that made the point, do you want to
Yeah.
re-make it, as opposed to me, like, putting words in your mouth?
Towards the end of the meeting, and he was making his chairperson last statement. One of our librarians, one of our library board members, asked you, why does Cedar Springs pay so much more than Solon? And AJ said that is the contract that the city signed, and that is the contract we have to abide by unless Solon or Cedar cancels that contract. Yes.
Yeah, it's on video.
That was my question, so.
Is it agreement?
It was recorded.
It's recorded.
Okay. I'm going to let him speak, because I think he needs to speak, so.
Okay, sure, I will recognize him.
I did make the comment that, that we are currently abiding by the contract. That is correct. I did not say that there could be no negotiations in the interim. And in fact, board members who are here can verify it. We've been discussing it ever since we received that letter. The problem was it was too one-sided, and we were trying to figure out, well, what is it that we would like to do? Hence, we ended up with a letter in February. But I did not state that you had to cancel a contract
Okay.
in order to have a negotiation, because obviously Mr. Romac sent us something before.
Sure.
Sure.
We, we've had, we've discussed it before in, in, in council, in staff meetings, and individually, one-on-one.
Right.
And I was, I was born with it out.
And I was, I was born with it out.
I was gonna say, I was gonna recognize Heidi because she was the one who.
Okay, alright.
Thank you.
There's a, it, it's just, you know, they're here, I need to hear from them.
I'm, I'm happy to have.
Yeah.
There is, there is also a recording.
Yes.
Of it.
Well, and I just wanted to make sure that.
And, um, so could we, could you state what the question was, Ms. Armack, that you asked about the equity? Right, I know, I kind of put you on the.
So the question. There is been a question that has been niggling around the library board about who the contract was going with, whether that was the city of Cedar Springs or whether that was with the library board. I think that's been addressed now, it was in the context of that.
Wasn't it about equity?
I, I have an addition, one year.
We'd have, we'd have to go back and look at it, but I recall the question being about, this is, I, you said, because I was also at this meeting, um, that you were concerned that there was a great deal of inequity.
Oh yeah, that's helpful to prove, I'm just not sure that was exactly at that point in the meeting, but that is certainly a question.
And the response was, the contract is the contract. And that if, and that if Solon, and that if Cedar Springs wants something different, then we need a different contract. And I don't, we've presented in December and we've present, I mean, I, I don't know. I'm at a place where I don't know how else we get this different contract. When we keep asking and we keep being told, but it should be Algoma. And Algoma's not an option. I mean, Algoma is not an option. If we bring Algoma in, we go to a top level class library, we're now serving 20,000 people. We had, we had Lakeland come in and speak to us about it. And we are required to have a library director with a master of library science. We're required to have a full-time, we have one full-time library director right now, and that's Cam. We're then required to have a second assistant director that's at least a level of Cam. And then we're required to have a third full-time person that's of the, the lowest level, which is where Donna was. And.
So. This contract has to do with Solon and Cedar, correct?
Right.
So why do we even, what does Algoma have anything to do with that either?
Keeps being presented.
But it doesn't matter, the, nothing to do with the contract that we're working with.
But when we asked for, when we sent a request in December, their response in February was, we want to join, we want to have Algoma join also, that Algoma, Algoma should make up the difference.
And that's what you guys came up with.
Yes, I mean, do you want, we, we discussed it in February, but there's the letter, signed by Bob Elick.
I, we, we need to just figure this out.
Right.
It's just, this is just too much for everyone. We sit up here and we understand where you guys, how you feel. We're, we live here too and we're here for you guys. But we need to get this figured out, like, contract, let's just, can't we just work together on it?
Right.
I mean, I don't understand why we need to go through this possible cancellation. I, I understand this is what you heard from a librarian, it's not. I don't understand where this disconnect is at all.
Love to speak to that.
Sure, go ahead.
So I, I would also, um, would have preferred to not have this discussion. I, I referred to this particular meeting as walking face first into a wood chipper. And I'm here with that much enthusiasm for this because I understand it's a very sensitive, very important topic. Unfortunately, our past attempts to change what existed was met with slow walking and months of delays. And, um, I'm not really, I, I'd prefer not to go into the other things, the other reasons that I, is not worked out well, uh, with the Solon Township Board. And there's been some difficulties, uh, working with them recently. But unfortunately, we seem to be at the place that I don't know how else to get action on their end. And what I do know is that the people I am supposed to represent are paying an unfair burden to try to keep this library that is important to people in both municipalities.
I'm.
I don't know what else to do.
I'm hearing that and I, I've heard it.
I don't know what else.
A lot of times, like I, I completely understand, but we should be able to work together.
I would.
This does not, right? And you're saying there's a lot of things and I don't know any of them, I haven't heard any of them. I'm, I'm looking at my emails and I see things, but I mean, I don't, I feel like I'm disconnected from some of us.
Okay.
And not even when I'm reading these pages of why we just need to work together. I think that Solon is willing to do that.
Well, except they don't seem to be, because you, if you look.
From February though, February, whatever.
Well, we, we sent it in December, they didn't respond till February. And then their, their response in February was, we need to not rush. If you look at that letter.
Okay.
And we have this difficulty that the library had a $22,000 deficit this last year. Like that's not sustainable. We, we can't continue to slow walk our way underwater.
Madam Mayor, if I could just.
Sure.
I mean, we could talk about $22,000 deficits, but in, you know, Carol Dahl is not here, Cammy's not going to get into it. But our library is one of the most underfunded libraries in the entire Lakeland Cooperative. And I don't even know if, uh, them going up to point six or point eight is going to solve the problem. Our library simply does not have the electronic media, it doesn't have the books on the shelf, it doesn't have all the things that we'd like to see our community have access to because they're so underfunded. So yeah, okay, we could maybe pay the bills and we could have our staff there, but it's not getting better. It's, it's an adequate library for the amount of money that's being spent on it. I think this board wants a good library. And I think Solon Township wants a cheap library. That's the impression we've been given. And there are dozens of things that the Solon Township Board and the Library Board have done that made it clear to me, uh, that there is no intention of funding the library additionally. The Solon Township Board is going through their budget, I'm sure. Um, and they haven't increased their funding as far as I know. Apparently haven't communicated that to the city at all. And the city is paying triple the rate.
Well, and then we added Ms. Falcon, put in a line item of $5,000 to just support the library. And we've said to Cammy, every time you have a program that you don't have enough money for, come talk to us. And we'll try to find some money for you. So we've been, we've been trying to pump more money into the library to keep it afloat, which is why we started this conversation with Solon back in December. We started it informally in October. We started it in writing in December. They then didn't respond until February, at which their response was, could we please take some time and slow walk this? And it's now April. And we got nothing, like they, and we keep presenting options. They've not presented any options other than we should have Algoma join.
So. You've presented options, this is the only option we've gotten so far from you from February.
You can answer that.
Right, which, which option are we talking about?
The one that was sent in February about, that you don't, that you disagree with the position taken in Mr. Womack's letter, that the contribution of anything below 1.22 levied within the city is less than a fair contribution. That one's from Mr.
Yeah, Mr. Elick's letter was pretty, pretty specific. And he was not saying that we would not, not take any action. He had been talking in between December and February.
Who has?
The Solon Township.
Have you told us that?
Well, we, just because of finger snap doesn't mean we can suddenly come back with something immediately and, and go right back at you either.
Hmm, right.
Not gonna get.
Sure, no, yeah.
And as far as the $22,000 is concerned, that was settled in a committee, which was also brought up at the library board meeting with funds that were set aside specifically for reasons like this. And that was also brought up, and I think, I don't know who addressed it earlier, maybe it was Vicki. But somebody asked the question about the millage that was passed but not fulfilled in completion. That money would have made up for that from 2013 forward. Regardless of, this is what I need to, I'm trying to.
That's, that's not accurate and you are not.
I understand that, I understand that as.
And you're, the library attorney says that's not accurate. That was given to you.
But today, so.
Yes, we just got it today, us two.
If I can clarify.
Yes, please.
There are two millages that the city pays for, the Solon Township does not pay these, only city residents pay them. Uh, it's a one mil millage and a point five mil millage. And that is rolled back under state law heavily.
Headly.
1.22 maximum, which should be city, uh, I'm sorry. The Solon Township members and the city members of the library board voted to increase the city resident taxes up to the absolute maximum.
We are at 1.22.
So as far as I'm aware, there are no other millages that exist in any statements of the contrary.
We could, we could go, having researched with Lakeland, the options for, for community voted millages. The community can vote, not us. The community can vote up to two mils. But we would have to put it on the ballot and ask the community to vote for two mils. So what we would be saying is, we would like the citizens of Cedar Springs to not just pay triple. We'd like to pay
Five times.
Five times because Solon doesn't think we're paying enough. So that's, there is, and, and it's, the library, the independent library attorney that they hired says in here that additionally, the city levies one mil for library services, which was not voted on by its residents. This is consistent with and authorized by section 1 PA 164, which says that a city council may levy a tax not to exceed one mil on the dollar annually on all taxable amounts. And that is from the independent library attorney that says, because they've been claiming that we're not levying all the millage that we should. We abs, we are not only levying all the millage we should, we're levying more. So this is, I'm.
So I think, oh, sorry.
Nope, that's good, I just.
I, I have it, I, I printed that agreement because it landed in our box today.
Okay.
So.
I think it's important that if we're gonna re, do a renegotiation, because basically at this point, we're forcing a six-month timeline for a renegotiation. That we not be bringing stuff, I mean, obviously this is relevant, but, um,
It has to be.
Like to work with you kind of like fresh slate. So that we're not saying like things that Baba did, like, we clearly didn't like that.
Right.
Well, for the city, you weren't, you're not him, so, and he's not on the board anymore, so.
Yes, he is.
Really.
He's absolutely.
He's not on the library board anymore.
No, but we're, but who we negotiate with is Solon Township.
Correct. So I just feel like if we're going to force a negotiation and say that that is our intent, that our tone and our intentions ring as it's a, it's a fresh slate, we're gonna do this in six months, we're gonna make it fair for, um, our citizens, which is who we represent. And Solon's gonna come to the table to make it fair. And we're gonna work together so that we can keep our community library. So that's, I just want to make that clear.
Yes.
I mean, you.
We still represent.
You can't be part of something and not.
But I don't want to be like, the whole time of like, who said, she said this.
Sure.
Right, right.
Somebody said this at a meeting or.
Did you look, did you all look at the proposal, um, presented through our attorney of, uh, that we are going to advocate that Solon take, that is a, so currently they're at point four. They would go to point six?
Well, I don't want to, I don't want to negotiate that at this point.
I'm not, I'm just saying, we're putting an offer out.
Correct, there's an offer on the table, they can counter offer it if they want, but I don't want to negotiate.
Talk about that.
I, I'm fine with that, I just want to be, I want to be clear that we are putting out an offer, which is totally fine. And a good faith offer.
Which is totally fine, and they can put in an offer also and we can.
Absolutely.
The whole point of this negotiation should be that we're forcing us to work together.
Yes.
And all parties should be actually taking that into account, that we're working together.
Absolutely.
Not, from my own vote, a forced negotiation to screw over Solon Township. That's not what I'm trying to do.
Amen.
Quite the opposite.
Yes.
So that's my intention with it, and I think that that should be the tone of the discussion in general.
Well, and just to clarify, if we, if our intent was to try to screw over Solon Township, we would not have voted to voluntarily as a board, increase this millage as much as we have to support the library.
Yeah, but stuff has happened after that, so.
Yeah.
Which both people don't like. So.
We have to look at now, spend changes. We have to, um, again, just get this figured out. We gotta do it in a peaceful way, no one wants to be, we just don't need this. Our world is already a mess, we don't need any more of this, we need to work together.
Community library, like, I feel like we really should all be.
Yeah. It is, yes.
You end up coming by all.
Yeah.
Thank you.
More? More?
Well, so, thank you.
Mr. Gross?
What am I to say? I've heard, I've heard, I have heard a lot of talk about community. Community isn't defined by borders. This is a community. Nelson Township chose to go with KDL. That's why they don't, aren't involved with the library here in Cedar, okay? Doesn't mean they can't come in, but it's just, they're not involved with it, okay? I see us with Solon as being a community. I understand the fact that our taxpayers are paying what they're paying. And I will guarantee you that not all of them know that they're paying that. Because we did choose as a board to increase it and pay more to keep this library going. I would suspect, I would suspect that the citizens of Solon Township do not know exactly what they're paying either. And I would like to see it even out as much as possible. But that's something that has to be done and only can be done through negotiation. Threats and finger pointing just will never accomplish a thing, other than calling, you know, creating a resentment. We don't need the resentment, we need to be able to work together and put it together for the betterment of this entire community. Okay, and that's all I've got to say, I, the fact, the fact, the fact that we have created a situation now that says, you've got six months to work this out. I'm hoping it is done in a month, month and a half. We have now forced a situation that if we vote for this, then it is automatically done in six months, if it's not reached. And I hope that doesn't come down to being that case, because it's just not the way it should be. Oh, anyway, that's all I've got to say, I think we need to bring it to a vote.
Okay, anybody else have anything else, discussion? So we have a motion and a second. And we will vote.
Conley, would you like me to read the motion I have if there's any clarifications?
Yes, please.
A motion to cancel the library services agreement in six months while we continue to negotiate a contract with Solon Township and notify the Solon Township Board and the Cedar Springs Public Library Board of decantation effective October 13th, 2023. That is the motion I have with a second.
Okay. Ready, Ms. Powell?
I'm ready.
I'm ready, uh, yes.
Ms. Atchison?
Yes.
Mayor Conley votes yes, Ms. Nixon?
Yes.
Ms. Hamel?
Yes.
Ms. Race?
Yes.
Mr. Gross?
Yes, only in the fact that it creates a timeline that make us come to an agreement.
Yep.
Okay, I think you. Motion passes. Moving on.
I would like to make a motion to authorize the city manager to begin negotiations on a new agreement for library services with Solon Township to be effective upon the cancellation of the twenty seventeen agreement. Support.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify, do you, do you wanna?
Okay. I know, um. Assuming we put Darla, because we haven't voted on that. When does that?
Um, well, I think, immediately, I have it here to sign.
Okay.
This is about giving them the notice so that it is official.
Correct, so my. No, no offense to Mr. Womack at all, with how much work he's put into this library, but I feel like he's not the best person to be negotiating our.
He's, he's not going to be.
So if it's.
And we know I'm leaving on Monday, right?
Oh.
He's leaving on Monday.
Perfect.
He is, he, we are, we are authorizing him, we're authorizing him to send.
Listen.
Send the notification.
Yes, that's fine.
Also, you will have a new manager at some point?
Yes.
Obviously, yes, 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 I know all that part, yeah.
Okay, is that, I mean.
Yes.
Okay. We good?
Yep.
Any other discussion? Do you need a roll call on this?
It's up to you, um, when in doubt, I would say do a roll call.
Sure, Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Ms. Atchison?
Yes.
Mayor Conley votes yes, Ms. Nixon?
Yes.
Ms. Hamel? Ms. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Okay, moving on, we have authorization to send the notification. Moving on. Thank you, by the way, I appreciate all of your due diligence and your effort and your reading and the thousands of emails, and I, I just appreciate you.
Meetings.
Meetings, phone calls, I appreciate all of your, and, and Rose, who attends every meeting of everything, she is our rock star meeting attender.
Retired.
I just want you to know, I really do appreciate that. Okay, moving on to approval, let's see, oh, hold on, I'm in the consent agenda. Motion to authorize the city manager to begin, oh, C, motion to approve the revised North Kent Community Enrichment and K C E bylaws as submitted. I, I, my only question was why this wasn't in the consent agenda?
You know, I didn't know if you guys have any questions about it, it's pretty simple stuff. Yeah, I should have put it in the consent agenda, but.
That's okay.
It's good.
Can do it next time.
I'll make that motion.
Sorry.
I'll support it, okay.
So pick one, Ms. Johnson. So all those.
Make a decision.
Let's, since we're just approving someone else's bylaws, um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, they know, motion carries, moving on to item D, a motion to approve the Flice and Vanderbrink proposal to provide conceptual designs for the redevelopment of Riggel Park, Morley Park, and Main Street streetscaping at a cost not to exceed thirteen thousand dollars, thirteen thousand one hundred dollars. So this is the, um, just to clarify, that we talked about having plans on the shelf so for when grants become available, so we were gonna try to go ahead and get those out there while we had some money in the budget to be able to do that in time, so that it, we aren't, when the grant becomes available, we can just pull it off the shelf and apply it, we don't have to panic and try to figure out how to make that happen, so.
Grant that I obtained for the city for the pocket park of seventeen North Main, I was just notified that a new, uh, cash of money is gonna be coming available for that same type of grant.
Oh.
Of course, since we were so successful last time, uh, I think we have a fair shot, but we need plans.
Need plans.
Okay.
And he has been just fabulous to work with, I mean, I think we've all really enjoyed him as a.
Assuming Mr. Souten up.
Stop. I'm pretty sure I told you I'd still write you a letter of recommendation, even though you don't need it. Okay, so moving on, um, is there a motion?
I would make that motion.
Okay.
Second up.
Okay, and since this involves spending money, we'll do a roll call, Ms. Powell? Oh, any discussion? Okay.
Just a short one, our, our, uh, parks are getting kinda antiquated, the equipment and so forth, so maybe we can upgrade a little bit and see what happens.
Yeah, I learned something, um, that you actually increase the value of your homes and your communities, like your house is worth more money if you're next to a park or a library. I had no idea, I just recently learned that from a realtor.
Whoa.
Yeah, I know, I'm like kitty corner from Riggel Park, so I, I, but that was an interesting, um, that was interesting to me to learn that. I, I mean, it makes sense, but I had never seen it like quantified in that capacity.
That dog park is so busy all the time.
I know.
Wonderful thing.
I know.
Great addition.
My dogs love it.
Job for putting all the balls off.
All right, so, Ms. Powell, any, any other discussion? Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Ms. Atchison?
Yes.
Mayor Conley votes yes, Ms. Nixon?
Yes.
Ms. Hamel?
Yes.
Ms. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Moving on to, and motion passes, moving on to, so tell, um, the folks at Flice and Vanderbrink to sharpen up their pencils. Motion to approve the proposal of executive recruiter, oh, we need presentations on this, I believe.
Madam Mayor, as you recall, Mr. Walsh did appear at the last meeting, he gave a brief presentation. I did invite him to attend, and he's right there on Zoom.
Hello.
I don't know if you want to hear from him again, he at least indicated last time that he felt he was satisfied with the presentation he made. Um, I did also speak with, uh, some people from Pivot Group, uh, they said that they don't normally give presentations unless you're specifically invited to do so. They did say that they'd be, uh, more than happy and very eager to do this recruitment, they think that they're gonna find a great manager for this community. Um, as I've indicated multiple times, they're both great groups to work with, I think to be satisfied would be the one.
Any conversation, discussion?
Should we ask Pivot to come in and do a?
Yes, I, I would not feel comfortable, um, picking one or the other without understanding fully.
Yes.
Um, what it is they feel they have to offer, um, and I, I would. I'm wondering if we should label this momentarily until after action item G, uh, which we added to the agenda in discussing an interim city manager, because that would certainly affect, um.
Giving us time.
Yes, yes, to allow for said presentation.
Good idea.
And to just get more, I mean, because I would kind of like to hear from M M L.
I heard M M L is really expensive.
Well, I know, but I.
They did find a pretty good person for us last time, I was saying.
I did approach.
And busy.
I did ask them to submit a quote, and they demurred, saying that they're too busy. I did look up their last quote that they did, which I believe is for the. Uh, and they were for eighteen thousand dollars.
Which feels very, no, feels very similar to what we paid the last time, they found us a very high quality candidate.
That is true.
Who stayed with us for about seven years, yeah.
That's true.
We had two, actually.
We did, we did, two of them, didn't we? We spent four days.
Twenty-six hours worth of interviews.
Yeah, on camera.
Hmm, yes, so, anyhow, um, I would make a motion to table item E until after action item G is decided upon.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Do we have to do a motion, or can we just switch it?
We, we could switch it, but the motion is to table it until we get to the end of action items. If you would like to make a different motion, you can, but at that point, you're amending the agenda. If we vote to table it, we just move on.
Is the M M L can't do it, they said no, they also charged almost double. We heard from Walsh, who did bother to come in to make a presentation. I don't know him, but it appears that lots of people know him, and he is in good standing. And Pivot said, we said what we said, if you wanna make a decision, make a decision, so I have all the information out, like, I would.
Ms. Hamel, Walsh do it. Just a minor clarification, I, I don't think Pivot Group said, we said what we said, I think they said, we don't normally come in unless requested.
Didn't we already request it, because they didn't come to the last one, so then we requested that they come to this one.
Nobody was really specifically even asked to come to the last one, is my understanding.
Right, but somebody was specifically asked to come to this one, because that's, what we had said, it was like, hurry up, we gotta make a decision.
Yeah, I'm not trying to dissuade you, but, um, I, I think I would clarify by saying I offered them the opportunity to come in, but not.
And they. Okay, and then they said no, because they're not here, so, that doesn't really.
Okay, there's a motion, there's a motion to table, there's a motion to table, so you should be discussing whether or not you wanna table it.
I don't wanna table it, that's.
Okay, okay, very good, good enough, okay, anyone else? So there's a motion, yes.
Just, uh, Ms. Hamel, would you be able to speak into the microphone so we can catch it?
Sorry, my back is like.
Nope, sorry, we need to stand a little closer.
Nope, it's okay.
Get a hold of for you.
I was gonna say, we could also like move it forward and angle it up, or you can stand? Yeah. So, okay, any other discussion on tabling? Okay, we have a motion and a second to table, yes?
Yes.
Okay, I'll do a roll call, Ms., Ms. Powell?
Uh, yes.
Ms. Atchison? The vote to table item, um.
Yeah, I, I know, I know, I'm just thinking, yes, yes.
Okay, uh, Mayor Conley votes yes, Ms. Nixon?
Yes.
Ms. Hamel, no, uh, Ms. Ray?
No.
And Mr. Gross?
Yes, and that it doesn't really change what's gonna be proposed when it gets, gets the order.
Okay. Just moving on. Item F. Motion to approve the separation agreement and release with Michael Womack and authorize the mayor to sign on behalf of the city.
Make that motion.
It's in, it's in the, I've taken all of your things and talked to the attorney lots.
Yeah.
So we're good? Okay, um, I'll do, so there's a motion and a second?
A motion and a second?
Okay, Ms. Powell?
Are we discussing?
Oh, discussion, any discussion?
Okay, so, are you still negotiating then?
I think he has it set, the attorney, he said he was sending the final. I think we have it.
That was my understanding as well, but let me pull up my.
Yeah, because I, I had Ms. Nixon on it too, but I, I did yours, that you wanted, and the thing you wanted.
And it's been sent?
It's, it's in an email.
I'm, I'm pulling up my city email right now.
Madam Mayor, just to clarify, I haven't seen anything.
Okay, well, he said he was gonna have it for you. So we can, we can amend it, I mean, we were, as of this morning, he was sending more drafts.
I know there's, there were some questions, but I never really got all the responses.
Oh.
Yeah.
Fair again, Madam Mayor, this was mostly, you know, me attempting to give another three weeks of time to the board to in the interim, get the recruitment board, you know, I obviously was not, I'm aware that you had spoken with Ms. Falcon about us potentially being the interim. Um, so, you know, I, I'm just a little in the dark here myself.
Do you want to amend the motion to have, um, the mayor pro tem and I?
Negotiate.
Finish, finish the negotiation with the attorney?
Yeah.
And sign it?
It's fine.
Do you all feel fine with that?
Yeah, what he proposed was, I thought, fair, so.
Okay.
I didn't have any.
Okay.
It's okay with me.
Okay, so I need, I need the person who made the motion to amend that?
Okay, so, yeah, who did that? You didn't? Yeah. Okay.
Did I?
Motion to negotiate.
I'm just laughing at them over there, who, who got that?
To negotiate.
The, the attorneys had a little bit of a struggle, because I've been locked in S A T testing, so I can't answer emails while I'm walking up and down and looking at a clock.
Madam Mayor, is it too late to require that, uh, the city buy me a cake as part of this negotiation?
Oh, yeah.
I.
She'll probably bring cookies.
Would you like me to do that? I can do that on Monday.
I would like to submit a motion that we buy him a cake.
I would second that.
I have a unicorn on top of it.
With a unicorn?
I don't have unicorns.
I could probably make that happen.
We stay on the agenda?
Yeah, okay, yeah, sorry.
Well, I'm, I'm waiting for the, the language.
You've got it.
Amend the motion.
Got it.
Okay.
Motion. To have the mayor of. Negotiate. Negotiate the separation agreement and release for, for, with Michael Womack and authorize the mayor to sign on behalf of the city. Was I?
Can we add Mayor Pro Tem?
Mayor and Mayor Pro Tem.
Mayor and Mayor Pro Tem to sign on behalf of the city, to authorize the mayor and the Mayor Pro Tem to sign on behalf of the city.
Okay.
Negotiating.
Ms. Powell, I, I don't think I quite got that, okay, sorry.
The motion is to have the mayor and the Mayor Pro Tem negotiate the separation agreement and release with, and release with Michael Womack and authorize the mayor to sign on behalf of the city.
I have the most motion as you stated.
Okay.
And did I support that?
That was your support.
Yeah, I support it.
Okay, any other discussion?
Oh.
Okay. Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Ms. Atchison?
Yes.
Mayor Conley votes yes?
Yes.
Ms. Hamel?
Yes.
Ms. Ex.
Renee.
Renee, sorry, I started to call you Ms. Atchison, Ms. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Okay, because I am deep in the agenda, and I don't have the, um, the A B C roll call, so I'm going down the roll. Um, all right, moving on to item G that we added. And this, I've also had the attorney, um, working with as we were scrambling to try to make this happen. And I've, I've talked to, I think, most of you about it, and I'm trying to find the, I, Ms., I sent it to Ms., um, Johnson, and she gave it to me, and I have it somewhere in the middle of my library stuff.
What are you looking for?
The motion, here it is, item, item seven G that we added, a motion to appoint the finance director Darla Falcon, Falcon as interim city manager for ninety days with compensation to be determined by consultation with M M L, the city attorney, and the mayor, and I think the emails are still flying, but I think we have the compensation, but we can.
I'll make that motion.
I would second.
Okay, any discussion?
I, I think Darla would make an excellent city manager, interim city manager, if she wants us. Because I think we want her.
And I, I believe, uh, Mrs. Falcon had been, uh, city manager previously, so she does have some experience in that regard. Um, and has certainly, um, in her tenure here, been found to be very competent, very conscientious, and very detail oriented. Fortunate to have her.
Other com, other. I, I am just very grateful, and we've, this is the fourth city manager I've been through. And, um, we have always done an interim. So I am glad that we can do this and keep the boat moving forward as we, um, you know, move forward in this process, and we can see how this works. And I know when Mr. Womack hired her, he said, I cannot believe that we got a person disqualified to be the finance director, because she used to be a city manager, and I can't believe that we got her to do this. So I'm very grateful that she is sitting in the wingman seat, ready to step in as we need as Mr. Womack goes on other, to other great adventures involving, I'm sure sidewalks and libraries, and probably marijuana. Which are the things we talk about, right? So, any other discussion? Yes.
Um, I don't see a date at which this is effective, is that something that you?
Um, oh, I think, because we need to go, we said that, isn't his contract, um, don't we have it on?
The seventh.
The seven. The seventeenth, but.
Thirty day of his notice.
Yes, but then we were going to go to May seventh for vacation time.
He'll be on vacation. Correct, but she would.
She would take over on the seventeenth, right?
Right.
Eighteenth.
The eighteenth.
Effective April eighteenth.
Right.
Does that sound right? Yes, Darla, does that sound right? Okay, based on what we asked you, I've had so many things with so many things that. Okay, sound right? Effective April eighteenth.
Right.
Hey.
Does Ms. Atchison like to modify her motion to include that?
Yes.
And Ms. Nixon, would you second that?
Yes.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Ms. Atchison?
Yes.
Mayor Conley votes yes?
Yes.
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 All right, we got it. Motion passes, moving on.
So, I would like to make a motion, uh, a motion. A motion, hold on, let me get back to my motion.
Your motion?
My motion. It's been a long day.
It has.
Okay, so we, I would like to make a motion to remove. Um, item seven E as in Edward from the table to discuss a motion to approve recruiters.
Yeah, I, I feel like I need more info, I mean. I know Mr. Walsh, I think he's wonderful. Um, we did use MML before, but if they're too busy and too expensive and I'm, I mean, I'm willing to accept that, but I would like to hear that. Um, I didn't feel like I had a lot of information on Pivot Group. I, now, to be fair, between getting our interim set up and the contract concerns. For exiting plus the library, I've been a little busy.
There's been a lot and I'm, I'm grateful that we, um, had in our midst someone who was competent and qualified and willing. God love her. To give us just a moment to, to step back and, and breathe and be very thoughtful because. As we have seen and as Mayor Emeritus Jerry Hall said, when we were, uh, looking for our last city manager. This person will affect the trajectory of Cedar Springs for the next fifteen to twenty years.
Yeah.
It's worth getting it right.
Yeah. Even if it means twenty-six hours.
Even if it means twenty-six hours.
Or maybe not.
That would be so cool if we didn't, but I'm willing. Anyway.
So is that a motion to table? Is that a motion to table until the next meeting? Is it a motion to?
I, I would prefer, um. I guess if, if Mr. Walsh felt that, uh, what he said at the last meeting was adequate, I will review the YouTube. Um, unfortunately, I was not able to attend.
Yeah, we only had four people here. That was the other.
The other, uh, trouble thing with that. Um, yeah, so I, but I would, I would like to formally involve. Invite, thank you. Um, the Walsh Municipal Services and Pivot Group to our next regularly scheduled meeting in May. Uh, so that we can make a fully informed decision about who is going to help us find. The next captain of our ship.
I agree, and if it's gonna be a lengthy time, hopefully Darla will be here for a long time.
I mean, we're gonna have to try not to break her.
We will have some starting point to go back to. You know, see what's the best option to use for a investigation.
Yeah, it's been seven years.
Yeah. So it's just kinda nice to know if something happened, we would say, yeah, we saw these guys and let's see what we can do.
My only thing is, um. That, um. I didn't wanna, I mean, we're, in May then we're already what, like a month into Darla's time? And we only have, I mean, we have an interim for three months. So.
Well, we could maybe beg her to do longer if needed.
Or if she chose not to, there are people who perform that function in various communities.
Yes, you can hire an interim. We did that with MML when the interim was the clerk and then the clerk retired. During that process and we went to MML and hired an interim. I feel like that's gonna make a mess. I'm, I'm not advocating, it's just.
Well, I.
It's better than rushing.
I don't feel like it is rushing if we have two candidates and one person or one candidate. Made a presentation, has followed up in email, is currently here to answer any further questions. And Pivot Group, no offense, I have no idea why they're not here. They said that they don't give. Presentations, which is totally fine, but then that's their own choice then. I'm, I mean, I'm really, I'm like shocked, I guess.
Well, I think what you're saying too is if they wanted it, why aren't they acting like they want it?
And why do we have to go that we're trying to hire them? Well, I want somebody who's dedicated to me and clearly we have somebody who's very dedicated.
And we can have Mr. Walsh present, but one of my concerns would be on trying to pick tonight.
They did present.
There were only four of us here.
It was on YouTube.
And he will tell you that he was not actually prepared to present that night. He didn't have his.
But he was willing to and said, like Mr. Womack said, that he was happy with his presentation.
I was happy with it.
I mean, that's my opinion, but you, um, clerk.
Sure.
Um, Madam Conley, I do have a motion for Ms. Nixon that was not seconded. I don't know if it was an intentional motion. Motion to remove item seven E from the, from the table and discuss recruiters, but there was no second on that, so there's just an open motion on the table.
Okay. Is, if there is not a second, that's okay, but.
But I guess then it just stays on the table and we move on. It continues to be tabled and we'll deal with it.
I would. Oh, we haven't untabled it? Correct, because I made a motion to do so, but there was no second, so if there is.
I will second the untape.
Stays on the table.
Wait, so do we now have a second?
Yes.
Thank you, God, okay.
Okay.
Just on second. We need to discuss. She wants to, the, the motion was to table it.
Right, so it is not, so we need to vote to untable it. Is where we are, so are we calling for the question?
So we have a motion to untable in a second. Any discussion on the untabling, I feel like Ashley has covered that.
The question has been called.
So now, the question has been called, let's just do a voice vote to untable. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed?
No.
The motion is.
Sure, but yes, I lost, it's okay, go ahead.
Okay, motion is back on the table.
Okay. Um, I want, I would make the motion to approve the proposal of Executive Recruiter Walsh. New Municipal Services for a price not to exceed. Should we say twelve hundred?
Thousand.
Twelve thousand. Yeah, twelve thousand.
Twelve hundred sounds better.
Twelve thousand.
I will second that.
Any discussion?
So, are we gonna need an executive recruiter?
I.
Anytime soon, or if we do, that's the one we're gonna pick?
This, this is saying we're going to, um, hire them. I'm, I'm up the same.
Darla for three months, ninety days, so clock's ticking on the interim.
So what if Darla decides to extend her employment?
Darla would like to apply, then she would apply through this and then we would be comparing her against the other.
Correct.
Granted, or the other gathered candidates.
I, I would like to have more time, but that's my. If you all don't.
Is it my vote?
It is.
I'm gonna say no.
Yes.
No?
No.
Yes.
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 Pass this.
Moving on. Motion to approve the, our discussion items, discussion with the White Creek Project TIP payback proposal. And they just came, got on the agenda today. You're up. And I said, I'm sorry, we got stuck tonight, but.
Hope you brought snacks.
Yeah.
I brought two beverages, that's where we were.
I am, I am, uh, well into my twenty-four ounces of water.
May have to.
Very soon.
All right, what we're discussing?
Are we gonna hear from them first?
I'm, I'm, yes.
Go ahead.
So, TIP production, discussion of the white tip. Now, this is, um, just to be clear, because we had a special meeting. On this at the fire station to talk about this and they need some, you're gonna be asking for an action item?
Uh, I believe today is just a discussion, um, with a, hopefully a recommendation that we can bring it forward to the Brownfield Authority, but. We can kinda.
Oh, you just need a straw poll recommendation.
Like a blessing.
Yeah, yeah.
Blessing.
Okay, cause I was gonna say, if you need a vote, we need to make it an action item.
No, no, um, and I do have printouts if people prefer paper.
I do.
Please.
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
It's all right. I was, I stand and walk when we're testing, so. I'm at thirteen thousand two hundred and ninety-nine steps.
I'm at a motion.
You're at a motion.
I'm at a motion. Been a long day.
It has been a very long day.
So, thank you very much, um, appreciate the opportunity before you tonight. Just to kinda recap for everybody's benefit. We did have a special meeting, we went kinda through the numbers, um, what we were proposing to utilize. Help support the project, um, and offset some of the infrastructure costs. Um, be to use a combination of the, um, connection fee repayment agreement. As well as Brownfield TIF, the whole intent there is to shorten the duration of the Brownfield TIF. Uh, so we talked about utilizing a pass through to account for some of the additional services and such. That will be required as, as part of this, um, you know, increase in density at the, at the site. So, we kinda looked at the numbers and I know staff looked at some numbers and I think, and I came up with a projection, obviously, these are. These are projections, um, that were in a range of forty-seven to sixty-three thousand, based on the additional, um, density. So, we went back to the numbers, um, and updated them and what we're proposing to set forth is fifteen percent pass through. Um, and when you look at these numbers, I summarized it, all the details behind it, the payback agreement is the same that we reviewed at the special meeting. Um, I, I summarized it in the first page, um, and it's just, uh, I'll kinda walk through the comparison, the top. Uh, the top one is the current taxable value and the projected benefit over a thirteen year period of about seventy-seven hundred dollars. Uh, based on the, the current value, with the proposed fifteen percent pass through. Listing the city millages, uh, accounting for the two and a half mil Solon Township, four twenty-five component. Um, as well as the first five years for the land bank five fifty, you can see it carries out to about seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand. Over that same period of time. This assumes a one hundred percent Brownfield capture. The whole point of proposing the payback is to shorten this period of time. So these numbers can certainly come down. That's our goal, that's our intent, that's why we're proposing that kinda two-pronged approach. Um, you'll see, like, one kind of major point here. Obviously utilizing the land bank structure and their five fifty that eats into that first five years. Uh, one thing we'd like to point out here to take into consideration, this is a build out over several years to get to full capacity. Um, Doug's assuming about a, probably a four-year build out before you're at full capacity. So the number that, that you guys looked at from the four hundred full capacity, that wouldn't be anticipated until. After the five fifty has rolled off and you can see, accounting for those millages and the two and a half mil carve out. That number bumps up to about eighty-nine increase, um, accounting for all that. So, we did take that into consideration, the fifteen percent is what we used to get up to this. Um, happy to go into any more detail, I provided the backup to all that. Uh, I know we went kind of painstakingly through each one of those spreadsheets last time, that was very helpful for both us and you. Uh, but for everybody else's benefit, if we want to go through, we're happy to do that. Uh, but this is, this is what we would like to take forth to the Brownfield Authority. Obviously, the Brownfield Authority would make a recommendation back to you. Counsel to make a formal consideration of their request.
Yeah, this is Molly's math.
Right, and so, please excuse me, it's been a very long day and the meds were up a while ago, so. Um, we had mathed at the, the, um, but special meeting, thank you. Um, and I, I want to say, I don't have that notepad with me that I had thought our fire and police cost. Reasonably were between.
Oh, yeah.
Twenty and forty thousand.
We still have to fix that.
Oh. Oh.
Cause we're up to one.
Cause we're up to one point two two.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Yes, um, so I, I kinda just need you to shorthand it for me, does this allow? That, um, thirty to forty thousand dollars to come through to the city every year? So that we can just cover our costs and make sure everybody's good?
Yup, so.
Tiered though, right? So it's like less when there's less, when you don't actually have the people there yet and then more, is that the deal?
So what we were backstopping and it kinda counts for the Solon Township, right? That, that fee right there. So all of these would be with the pass through, if you look at the second piece, all the stuff in black is what would be flowing through. To the respective taxing jurisdictions. What I'm showing is the offset because of the land bank five fifty, it carves half of that away. As well as the Solon, accounting for the Solon Township four twenty-five payment. So the bottom would represent the net benefit to the city after accounting for all of those.
Okay, very good, and that's why it mattered that we weren't fully built out until year four, because the numbers that I ran were based on a fully built.
Yeah, so.
Okay, very good, right.
Right, so if you, if you use the lower end of that spectrum, forty-seven, twelve grand short, and that's, that's. That's still during build out period.
Sure, sure.
In theory, there's not a lot of ambulance calls, unless your construction people have a lot of.
Yeah, yeah, the, the whole point of that is obviously, it's, it's a buildup to that full number. And at that point in time, you know, it's projected to have sufficient revenue, um, and obviously, yeah, the military's, right.
And then it will actually shorten the time because.
Yeah, the, the, yes, again, coupled with that repayment, um, agreement for the tap fees.
There you go.
Again, it, yeah, that, that it could very well be, you know, be Doug, Doug's group paying into, um, but that's fine. We're, we're fine with that. We're just trying to offer up a, a combination of tools here to help the project move forward.
We're just making sure, because our Mayor Pro Tem did lots of maths, that we can still pay our police and our fire.
I see our Finance Director doing lots of maths.
Yes, do we need, do we need our, our interim manager Finance Director to give us anything?
Nope.
Okay.
She'll probably go over.
Yeah, I, um, that, that, that seems reasonable and correct.
The initial signing of this tool for this, like, two years ago?
Oh, we go back farther than that, I think. It was, I think we first worked on the brewery.
In this.
Well, in the brewery.
Well, I was talking about this specific.
Oh, this one, yeah, yeah. Yeah, we've, yeah, we've been at it for, for a while, so.
So in the, in the short term, yeah, in the short term, we're at close to break even. Um, in the medium term, we're at least at break even, and in the long term, this is very good for the city.
Yes.
Excellent, I like it.
Okay, so I'll do a straw poll, is that work?
Yeah, well, all, all we're asking for is a nod to, to move forward to the Brownfield and obviously it's gonna come back here for final discussion. This is not a, a vote tonight, but.
Okay, so I'm gonna do a straw poll, does this seem amenable?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, mayor votes, yeah, that does not vote polls, yes?
Not yes. That confused me, yes, go.
Um. I understand the summary of it, I don't understand the numbers, but, um, so, yes, with the understanding of what.
Were you at that meeting?
Okay, so, but.
Yes.
Yeah, I understand like.
Believe me, it was discussed well.
It was.
Very much.
I, I think it lives on Zoom.
Oh, perfect, I will watch that.
We did it at the fire station, so it's not in our typical YouTube.
Okay, YouTube.
But it was, it is on YouTube as a Zoom, so it's not pretty, you'll probably wanna just listen to it.
All right.
Madam Mayor, if I could, Mr. Belka, could you just walk us through briefly kinda what the process is gonna be moving forward?
Yeah. Um. Yes, too.
Yes, we got you. I think Ms. Johnson got you, yes?
Geez, I didn't say anything, I guess my shoe.
Oh, I, I saw you, I saw you nodding your head as I was going down and said, this is a straw poll.
Dog in the window, it's time to spring, the dodges have a lot, doesn't mean it's a funny.
Okay, that's fair, that's fair, that's fair, Mr. Gross.
Um, yeah, so thank you, Mr. Womack. Um, yeah, so thank you, Mr. Womack. The, uh, the, the process here would be next steps taking this forth to the Brownfield Authority. Uh, the Brownfield Authority would review it in full, would make a recommendation, we hope, to the council, um, with this land bank. Um, with this land bank participation, uh, the council needs to vote on a plan. At the time, land bank has control, so we would, following the Brownfield Authority as opposed to. You know, moving to the next available council meeting, we would need to coordinate with the land bank in order to get that structure in place. Once that structure's in place, we could then look to schedule the council meeting to come forth. Um, so, I wish I could say it'd be a, you know, bam 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 process, but we need a little time to work with the land bank to get that. Uh, in place. There are some agreements that need to take place there. Once we get that in place, it would come back before the council for consideration. Uh, we would, uh, the, we would ask that we get on the next available Brownfield Authority meeting. From there, um, I've already reached out to the land bank saying, you know, that we've met and we've had great discussions and we hope to be able to coming back to them. Um, I would probably say, and some of that has to do with the land sale transaction, so I'd say. We probably need a month in that time period to get that stuff buttoned up and then it could come back to a council meeting.
And also, you need to get the planning commission, is that in your ear or how do you want to do that?
Uh, the engineers are working on the final submittal and we hope to have it submitted. I think it's early May for a June meeting, that's our goal. So, that's what we're working towards.
Mr. Womack, you had, um, said something about escrow?
Yeah, so I mean, it's, uh, it's always a philosophy of the city to have a developer pay for the developers' costs, right? So, part of this is the city attorney will have to review things, the city engineers can't review things. You know, it's just not appropriate for the city for every developer who comes to town to pay for their bills, right? Um, so one of the things, at least for the planning commission, we always do is require an escrow. Um, which is one of the reasons I'm asking about the, uh, um, the planning commission approval. But, you know, Brownfield Board versus city council, you know, we're gonna want our city attorney to review these things. Not that I don't trust Mr. Belk, he's great, but he has worked for us, he works for them. Um, so we probably want to take some, uh, escrow as part of that process, which of course they then get back whenever we don't spend. Um, and then same thing for the planning.
Isn't that, doesn't the planning commission say that?
Oh, the, the Brownfield Board is not the plan.
Oh, I thought, but I'm saying we don't. The DDA is the Brownfield Board. Okay, cause I'm saying we're not asking for an escrow. It would be those boards.
Yeah, what, so this, the Brownfield Board would make a recommendation of the city council.
I see.
So, at some point, Brownfield Board and the city council should get some kind of review done by the city attorney.
Sure.
It's gonna cost money, which the developers.
So, well, here's, here's my, my one question though, because this is your second iteration through this. Because you had a different set of plans and we're trying to do this and then there was a, a wetlands issue, so you had to reconstruct. Does that escrow already exist? Not for the brownfield, okay.
We'd have to check. We, we do try to go and give that money back at some point, so.
Right, but they were still.
I honestly don't know what status is.
Yeah, I know they came and were like, we would like to reconfigure.
I know, I'm just saying, I, I know we, we do these, we have so many of these one on, I'm not sure.
Sure.
Well, and I guess the, the point is administratively, we're gonna ask for an escrow.
Sure.
Council doesn't really have to make a decision on that, but, you know, it's convenient since they're standing here, uh, tell them that.
Would you like, would you like it? Do, would you like a motion for an escrow?
No, I just wanted him to.
Okay.
Okay, I just wanted him to clarify, cause he had brought it up.
Everything is copacetic.
Yeah, well, you're on planning commission, so this comes to you.
Yeah, I just wanted a clarification, so.
You're good. You're good. Okay, any other questions? Do you have what you need?
Uh, yes, yes, we do, and thank you very much. And, uh, I guess in, in closing comments, uh, would like to thank Mr. Womack for all the patience and. With us and, 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 uh, and his patience and persistence in getting us back before you, so we know it's, it's obviously a long road. We're not there yet, but. We've made a lot of progress with, with your help, so thank you very much and thank you, Mr. Womack, and best wishes in your, your new position.
Thank you. Thanks for waiting. And make sure you make that adjustment on the. Moving on, discussion item, infrastructure assessment proposal.
That's all with the White Creek.
Yes. Feel like you got all this?
So, that was all just, uh.
Yes, got all this? Communications, community event calendar. Think Mr. Womack added some stuff towards the, like, we got our, we got our agenda out later than we normally do. I know we're, you only have to have like.
Yep, so.
Twelve hours or something.
Put those in your consent agenda just for you to be reviewed. Um, I did communicate with Mr. Hopkins and with, um, I believe Mr. Heisinga. Um, you know, w- where they want to do a thing and when I asked for more details, they just didn't have them yet. Um, so I'm gonna ask them to, when they have more information, submit it and it'll be back.
And they frequently, like, I, there was, uh, you all probably have it in your email. I got it to do a ribbon cutting at the animal hospital. Then the initial one was for, it covered like twelve hours. Like, could you get a slightly more specific topic?
Depends on what fuzzy creatures would be there. If I can spend twelve hours.
Right, right. So, yeah, that's the, um. And so Daddy Daughter Dance, Nerforce, I know that, um, Ms. Falcon has been quite involved with the NKCE. Anything you wanna tell us about any of this?
We're planning events all the time. Our next one is the Saturday, the senior dance, three to five at the middle school. I hope there's good attendance.
This is first time?
Not just for seniors.
First time?
For senior dance.
Got live music?
Like senior as in?
Like elderly. Today's my birthday, I'm fifty-three, do I?
Here's some high school, let's put it that way.
Right.
It could be a very interesting news.
I, I believe that all are welcome, but it is focused on senior citizens.
Oh, okay.
So, I'm guessing like the music selection would be Rock and Roll, that era, right?
Rose will tell us all about it, I'm sure.
She tends to everything.
Find somebody to dance with.
I'll go and dance. Alright, then Michigan Liquor Control Commission notification of license transfer from MK Coley to. So, this is, I mean, and we don't like do anything, we're just told.
There's actually some very interesting stuff there, but boring for you guys, so.
Yeah. Uh, lot, some, um, lawful non-confor- conforming, this is more of those coming in from the.
Yeah, they were.
This is part of the, we didn't have the records, I'm trying to create records, and then at some point, hopefully next year, you guys will go into master, uh, plan, planning.
Right.
You will hopefully have every one of them listed at that point, which you could then throw on your master plan.
I think that's like five thousand dollars or like more than that. It was like fifty.
The, the state says we have to have and is actually really useful. Alright, uh, the public library balance sheet, we're taking a look at, um, and is. If you're at the budget, I know there were only four of us at the budget meeting, but Darla has added some, just a chunk of money to the budget. To help us float the library, because they're.
Oh, may I, may I, if I could just, so, the way that five thousand dollars came to be is, you know, I, I understand that there's fear that KDL is some. Eight-hundred-pound gorilla and they're gonna come in and do their own thing. So, I went to the actual employees at the library and I said, hey, if you want to run your local programs, how much is it gonna cost? They said four thousand bucks. And I said, well, I want to ensure that the library, no matter what happens, is able to maintain their programming. And since they're not getting funding from Solon, uh, and there's a possibility that it goes to KDL. I want to make sure that our local people can do our local events.
Yeah, we've been having Kami come to us on an individual basis. You probably remember for like. Money for the Halloween and money for red flannel and money for, um, the, uh, the, um.
Student program.
But, yeah, the senior program that, and we just keep saying, if you have a thing and you need it funded, yes, come to us. So, we just put a chunk of money in to protect those programs and. KDL or not, I mean, to just make sure that we could protect those programs. So, that's what that is, that piece of it, because we do, we value our library. Um, let's see, approved community event, women's life walk, that was the one you were, you had to get in at the last minute?
No, the ones that were the last minute were in your consent agenda.
Okay.
This sure walk happens every year, it's very minimal impact, um, you guys might not even know what occurs.
That's why I thought it would be enough, okay. Um, the library per capita proposition. Oh, this was the, like, how much we spend per citizen?
Yeah, so, uh, I worked with the KDL to figure out the difference between what the city and Solon and whatever, uh, spend on the public versus what. The KDL spent on their public. I believe it works out to about thirty-three dollars per person. It's spent on city and Solon residents, uh, under the current taxes.
Yeah, it gets a little weird because again, we put in just straight money that isn't part of the millage.
Yeah, and then, um, when you look at what KDL spends on per person, it's about seventy-five dollars per person. What it's worth.
Yeah.
There's a lot to it, but money-wise, they're spending more than double per person than we are.
Uh, then, uh, the Cedar Springs, oh, KDL MTGA Tales From The Trail?
Uh, wait.
I skipped, did I skip over?
Cedar Blitz.
Cedar Blitz.
Race report from last year. We do continue to work with, um, uh, Marty Rosansky, I'm sure I got that wrong. Uh, great guys to work with. Th- that's very largely a Kent County Sheriff's Department issue, uh, cause it does require an, an intense amount of, uh, sheriff. Deputy's hours, um, but, um, this year, they're gonna be included in the gravel race something or other series. And we're anticipating three to five hundred people on bikes this year.
Wow.
Now, if you guys will recall this from two years ago, I said it's gonna get big. Now, the biggest race in Michigan has something like five thousand riders, so we're not quite there yet, but, uh.
It's growing.
It's growing.
It didn't look like great fun. I mean, I walked by it last year when.
It's great fun if you're watching it. If you're attempting to race in it, like, not this race, but I've done other bike races and come in dead last place, uh, it's not as much fun.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Oh, really? I just would, I'm not trying to like, I'm just saying like, I would think that that would still be fun.
Those guys are doing thirty-plus miles an hour.
Yikes.
Struggle to hit twenty, so.
Oh, I would fall off my bike, so.
We'll get you a tricycle.
Okay.
I'll be in the back with cake and the beer.
Okay, right?
I got you.
Okay, thank you. I did the five K with my kid and I used to do it in a stroller and we would come in dead last.
Yeah, so I mean, I would think that.
I'm here, I'm here for it. Yeah. Okay, so then, uh, the, we're the MTGA Tales From The Trail. I'm assuming that's the White Pine Trail.
Yep, so there's a group, I think it's the Friends of the White Pine Trail and all, you know, all sorts of groups, uh, are trying to benefit the trail. I understand that they were paving last late fall.
Yes.
From Sand Lake North. When I tried to go up there, it was too cold and there was also blocked off and I said, I'm a rule follower, so I'm not doing that. Um, but, no, I'm glad it's going further north and hopefully it'll go all the way to Cadillac at some point.
I attended a breakfast. I brought some stuff back that Carol Glanville had sent to me last. I'm trying to remember about the, how they were expanding those trails. And that it's a big deal because the White Pine Trail will now have a hundred miles of paved, continuous paved road. And that like makes it a destination, because when it hits a hundred miles, there's people who come to do just that. Like, it becomes an actual, not, I mean, like, I go walk my dog on the White Pine Trail, but I don't.
Like crazy trail people from.
I don't, right, I don't get on a plane to go do that. Where, when you hit a hundred miles, it becomes an actual destination, which brings people to our community, which, you know. So, that was sort of a thing when I learned that. Okay, uh, Cedar Springs mu- oh, KDL service area map.
Interesting thing I've, I've found, thought you guys might appreciate seeing it.
It's interesting how much of Kent County it covers.
Yes. On a museum note.
Yeah, museum note?
The city donates a certain amount of money each year, it helps keep them open and I, I believe they've, uh, increased their hours this year. We do have a brochure up on the city.
Oh, yeah.
If you want to grab one on the way out.
It is really cool.
It is.
As small as the city is, it's a fun little museum.
It is.
Do a lot of, I believe, endometological work and other things, so.
There's a cool map, it's a like sketched drawing map from eighteen sixty that has. Several of our houses on it, if you live on Fifth Street, so it's a, and you can buy it. When I bought it, it was like fifty cents. I'm gonna guess there's some information. We get a copy of it, but it's, it's kind of fun. If you're, if you live in an old part of the city.
They're open, gonna be open from ten to two on Saturdays, which is great.
Yeah, cause that, just Wednesdays used to be a struggle. Oh, we should go, yeah.
Very ultra.
It is really fun.
And they're like.
Whoever's.
My son's kindergarten class today.
And like the volunteers there are super knowledgeable. Like, there's a, a gentleman who actually told us how the arm works to collect. The mailbags, cause the train didn't stop. And, um, told us a, a fun story about someone who shipped some red paint.
Running ideas in your heads, but, um, judges will occasionally hold court in high schools because court is wherever the judge is. Uh, council meetings are wherever the council is.
Oh, now it's hard, now I guess we should probably make sure we clear that with the clerk, cause it would be hard to zoom it and so on. But we could do especially like maybe a fun, um, special meeting and.
Yeah.
Saturday. That could be really cool. That's a great idea.
We could go to senior dance.
We, we could. I'm not interested in conducting business while I'm dancing, but. But, sure. Okay, White Pine Trail Heritage Project. Nothing? Okay. City manager.
It was a little bit like, uh, announcing your own eulogy.
Oh, my god, you're gonna die.
Well, no, I mean, you know, e- even though eulogy is normally used for a, a funeral of some kind, it can be used in other circumstances.
Okay, alright.
Um, I've been here seven years, uh, certainly not, everything's been perfect the whole time. Uh, I think I've done pretty good. Brought in lots of dollar bills into this community through grants. Uh, we've made, you know, some tremendous trends, uh, changes. I mean, you guys are getting new sidewalks like this week.
Yeah.
Main street's gonna be milled and filled sometime this year.
The bridge is fixed?
The bridge, yeah.
That we did, uh, I, I believe the, uh, old fire truck is still at the fire station. I don't know if Marty, Marty, are, are you there? I'm sure you'll confirm that in a minute.
Dean-powered fire truck.
Wasn't always there, um.
We have a new fire station.
Yeah, I cer- I certainly don't have the time and nor would I force you guys to listen to seven years worth of work that we've done here in this community, but, you know, uh. There, there's a lot of disinformation out there. Uh, I'm, I'm shocked and disappointed when I hear people say. Uh, things like, well, I, city manager doesn't care about fixing potholes or, you know, the city manager just hates the library or all sorts of crazy stuff, you know? Whispering in my ear while I'm trying to talk, thank you.
Bless you.
Yeah, we, we go into this line of work because we want to serve the public. It's called public service for a reason. We want to do what's best with the constraints that we have. Uh, we, we don't have a bajillion dollars. If we did, you know, things would be a little bit different around here. Um, we have legal constraints. We, we have all sorts of laws we have to follow. Um, but we certainly all want what's best for the city of Cedar Springs. I think we all would want what's best for the greater community of Cedar Springs. Uh, with that, uh, you know, it's been great working here. I appreciate the confidence the city council showed me. I think we've worked together and hopefully we'll work together with both Ms. Falcon and whoever is your long-term manager.
We're just thinking about shooting. Moving on to Department of Public Works.
Phil? So, I'm sure, I'm sure you've all noticed the sidewalk projects moving along good. Um, we've had a long-term employee retire. It's his last day. Um, we've had a long-term employee retire, it's his last day, that would be Pete.
Oh.
We also hired a new full-time employee to take his place, his name is Jason Kane.
It's nice to meet you, Jason, if you're listening.
And we also have another new seasonal employee, uh, first name is Larry, forgive me, I'm not even gonna try to pronounce his last name. But, uh, um, yep, so we've got a few new hires and everything else is going good.
Awesome.
All right, I hear it may snow on Monday.
I don't want to hear about it.
Just my tomato plants are getting lots of exercise going in and out. All right, Police Department. Sergeant Probst.
Yeah, I just would like to, uh, wish Mike the best. He's gone to the city up here. Best for him, wanna say that's been great working with them. Good working with them?
It's been okay working with them.
No, it has, it has been good, um. It's been a lot for the city. We got the city.
As long as he remembers that a Flint Coney Dog is the real Coney Dog.
Reinforced multiple times.
Just saying. Because the girl from that, because Detroit is just a chili dog. So. They are fighting words if you're from.
Fire department.
Fire Department.
I'm here, um.
Right.
I would like to thank Mr. Womack, however, he's used material, I'm looking forward to working with Darla.
So y'all better buy him a good cheese, like, damn, for you guys, seven years.
Mr. Fraser thinks that this is my last meeting, however.
Oh.
There is a staff meeting on Monday.
Oh, okay. No, no unicorn cake piece for you, Mr. Braver.
I, uh, I don't have anything other than what's in my report, I'm willing to answer any questions, if none, I will sit here and be quiet.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
Fraser, could you up, update us on the antique fire truck real quick? If you have.
It's in our building. Maybe Mrs. Powell can enlighten me a little bit, but the individual that we are talking about, um, seems to be a little bit hard to connect with sometimes, uh, I've been by there a couple of times and his vehicle is not there. Uh, I am, however, I have plans next week to pitch a tent by the front door and wait for him to show up. Um, we.
Let us know if you need that catered.
We have to get this thing moving, because I had several people in town expressed an interest in having it ready for Red Flannel Day.
Yes.
I think.
Go ahead.
I think it's doable, uh, it's just.
I was at a. The power of Zoom.
Go ahead, whenever you're ready.
I was at a red flannel meeting last night and they were gonna try to help the fire department look into it, and that's all I know.
Well. We have some monies available if it's, if that's what it's gonna take, um, the individual, and I won't mention names, um, volunteered several years ago. Um, tend to be exact this October, um, to do everything free of labor. Uh, all we had to do is buy the materials, while I'm at this point now where I, I'd be willing to take some of that money that hasn't been used to pay an individual to finish the project.
Yeah, good idea.
And then the council puts in.
I would think so, after ten years. Move on.
Yeah.
I would have been done six months into it, but I don't have no patience, so.
I'd make mention to the council, stay tuned, uh, it has not been forgotten, and it is at our station.
Okay.
Sorry, let's see. The City Clerk.
Let me guys have my report, just as a reminder, nominating petitions and affidavits of identity to run for city council are due Tuesday, April twenty-fifth at four P M. At this point in time, we've had four petitions pulled and none returned at this point. Um, so we look forward to seeing those in the future. Um, other than that, just been busy with FOIA and a lot of other things in the last, uh, probably eight weeks, but uh, just wanted to thank Mr. Womack for his service to the city and wish him the best of luck.
Finance Director, and she got to be the star of the show the last time, for those of you who were not here, you missed out, just saying.
Put the budget together, it's a big project, but it, I'm, it's not done only by me, so I do thank everybody that contributes to getting all the numbers collected and information and put into the budget. I too want to thank Mr. Womack for his time here, it's been nice working with him and I wish him well in his new job. And thank you for offering the interim position to me, I'm forward to working with you guys and keeping projects moving and
And I will say what I said the other night, because we didn't have everyone here, that budgets are a reflection of your values. And she does an amazing job of putting that together in a way that reflects the values of our city. And I'm exceptionally grateful for that. Hey, moving on, Code Enforcement. Building Inspection. Boarding Commission Minutes, North Kent Enrichment, January ninth. Council Comments. This hell.
Uh, like I said, I went to a red flannel board meeting last night and they're getting everything in gear and ready to go, and they have what, eighty-fourth?
Eighty-fourth.
Yes. And, uh, working real hard and, um. Uh, I'm glad we hurdled the library issue and I think we will exa, make progress from now on. And not just be stumbling around in the dark about who said she should and who shot John. So, uh, like, like, the Judge, Judge, uh,
Judy?
Judy says who shot John. So anyway, uh, thank you, Mike, and hopefully we can get like a hamburger sometime while you're on vacation here in the next couple of weeks. I know you like those Legion burgers, so we'll try to do that when you're available, I know you're gonna be busy. And tell Glenna, we're glad she's doing well with her eyes and all that kind of stuff.
The offered tomato plant still stands. Mr. Gross.
Thank you, everybody, for the discussions we've had tonight, I think most of them were productive. Uh, definitely want to thank Mike for everything he's done, I'm sure I've been a thorn in the side on occasion. But, uh, doesn't mean that it hasn't been good discussions and, and everything's been thought out and, and he's done a lot of things for the city. Uh, and I appreciate that, uh, as I do all of the staff and, uh, Sheriff's Department and things of that. I do want to mention, I is one of them that worked with Marty and even before that, trying to get the old truck fixed. Uh, I want to remind some people that when it's brought back to its pristine condition in the way it should be, it should not be, uh, treated in the manner that it was in the past, uh, it should be a parade vehicle only and not necessarily everybody sitting all over with the Keystone Cops. Uh, because that was one, there was a lot of damage and stuff done for it, so, uh, leading parades and things of that nature, I think it would be a great attribute to the community, but, uh, I, it needs some respect, that wasn't the first fire truck that, uh, was ever purchased by the city of Cedar Springs, and once upon a time, I saw a picture of it on a flatbed, uh, rail car being delivered to the city, and I don't know whatever happened to that, so. Uh, it is a piece of history for the community and needs to be treated as such. There was comment made earlier tonight about Morley Park, uh, and the way it was treated, uh, by the community. I can tell you, not that that was there when it was done, but, uh, Mr. Morley did donate it to the city and it was only to be for an adult park. When that was revealed several years ago, the property was deeded back to the Morley family and then turned around and deeded back to the city as a park as for everybody, not just for adults. So, uh, that was addressed by the city and the, and the city fathers at that time, and I can't tell you exactly when that was, but there's records around here somewhere, so, uh, part of the story was correct, but it was taken care of and corrected. And it had become a children's park also, and that was why they wanted to get it corrected, so they were not, uh, so they were in compliance with what it was originally donated for, so. Again, I wasn't there, because that was even before I was around, I think. So, but anyway, except the, the transition back and forth again, but, uh, anyway, that's probably enough. Thank you.
Ms. Echison.
Well, we got through tonight, that's a good thing. I hope it's only moving forward. And I think that Ashley is correct in saying that we need to start scratch. And none of this, he, he said, she said, and who shot John? Um, because I don't think, I think that we were able to work together before, so I don't think it's a problem, it should be a problem now. Um, we didn't do a lot with the planning commission this week, this week, there's, we didn't have a lot on the plate, we're still talking about solar energy and what to be able to have in the city, in the yards or on the road.
Thank you for your service on that committee.
Thank you, I'm not looking for things, but, um, thanks, um, Michael. For your service, um, it was nice getting to know you, um, and working on the things that we're, we've been working on, um. It's gonna be great to work with you, Darla, I'm looking forward to it. And always great to work with Rebecca. And all the other staff, I think, thank them for, it's making our job easier. I'm looking forward to hopefully having less of a look for an agenda.
Good luck.
Yeah, really.
I was gonna say, we do a lot of stuff, it's hard to.
Yep, so I think that's it.
Ms. Race.
I think we, uh, are moving in the right direction, um, with, um, the decision to, uh, with the library. And I think that, you know, there are a lot of things that were discussed tonight, but I think the public needed to hear them as well, to know that we are not bad people, we're here to take care of, of everyone that is on that contract. And to, and everyone should be treated fairly for that. Um, and I hope that it goes much smoother this time around, sometimes we just need a little slack. Um, Michael.
Womack.
Master, what are you, master, doctor, master, I don't.
I'm just thinking, the only people call me Michael are my wife when she's mad and my mom when she's mad, so.
Maybe I'm mad at you, I'm kind of mad at you.
Yeah, I know, I think I've never, ever called you Michael before, I don't know why I did.
You, you've been a great mentor for me, I've learned a lot working along with you. Just like in the city council, um, we've been very lucky to have someone that has the legal background. Um, that's something we're gonna have to think about, um, because he was able to kind of sort through a lot of things without having to bring a legal attorney in right away. When finalizing things, he would obviously, we would obviously go to the attorney, but it just helped kind of move things out along a lot faster. There's a lot of things that, uh, the city has changed in five years. I mean, in so many ways, I've been here seven, eighteen years or so. And, um, I just know that what has happened, I know that the people that live in the city are happy about. And, um, it's always good to see people coming here to support, um, and, uh, just wanna, just wanna thank you for all the work that you've done. And congratulations to you, I hope you're happy with that.
She's gonna run screaming.
I know. Uh, and that's it.
I could just add one line, but, so I accidentally came across Ms. Race's application to join the planning commission thing back in August of twenty seventeen.
Aww.
Daughter was, at least you said to me.
No.
She's not.
No. No. Yep, I've been hooked for a while. We need it, right?
Ms. Pamela.
Um, I just wanted to say thank you to Darla for volunteering to do the interim, but super helpful, makes it less scary. Um, and to Mike. Michael. Um, I really appreciate you and, um, I didn't even know how local government really worked at all, uh, starting with planning commission, so I appreciate you teaching me everything. Um, and being patient with me, calling after hours so that we could discuss things, because I didn't understand how things worked, like, on the planning commission, I asked a lot of stupid questions. I didn't know how to, like, propose a motion or how to second a motion, like, all that stuff, so I really appreciate the time that you put in. Um, and I take, like, uh, affirmations, that's like everything to me. So, when I hear you say that you're, like, sad to hear that people don't appreciate you, I hope that you know that people do appreciate you and that people that have negative comments usually are the loudest. Um, and I've seen how you've negotiated, I was on the, um, like, negotiation board for the, what was it called, the Los Angeles Family Homes. Um, so I, I know your intention, um, to do good and to help everybody get along, if people miss that, there's not really much that you can do. So, please know that I think you did a good job, lots of people think that you did a good job. You won't please everybody, but I think you should be very proud of your time here.
Ms. Nixon.
You didn't want any long speeches, I'm so sorry, it's not gonna go well for you.
I know, he literally specifically said, oh, no.
Yeah. So I just, I want to share a story that, um, Michael never put on her resume. But I think that it really embodies, um, what his time here has been. And I don't remember what year it was, but I do happen to remember it was supposed to be City Impact's grand opening, but then there was an ice storm and nobody had power. And there were lots of people in the, um, trailer park on the north end who were going to be very cold, and so City Impact was trying to gather supplies, and I happened to run into him that night at Meyer. Going to buy breakfast things with his own money. For our community, because it needed to happen, because in a moment of crisis, our leader stepped up, saw a need and worked with City Impact to fill it, to make sure that people were safe and warm. And set. And that is one example, there were many. But that was, I think, that really embodied the spirit of service that, that Mike has had, and I I'm incredibly pleased with the outcome of twenty-six hours of interviews and multiple migraine headaches, and I think it was worth it. And since Mike has been here, he's had more than twenty-six hours of multiple migraine headaches, and God love him, I don't blame him for it. Good luck, Mike. Yeah.
Um, I did the same twenty-six hours, you are the fourth city manager, I have worked under. I did the same twenty-six hours. You are the fourth city manager I have worked under. With. And then I've had two more that I have worked with when I was on library board and school board. So that's a little bit. And when we did the interviews, um you were my pick. And Jerry Hall was not too sure cuz he said, you know, he's a lawyer. And I said, but I think maybe we need that. And Jerry said, alright, if that's what you think, I'll vote that way. And then later he said to me, you're right, we needed that, so. I still think that I was right in asking Jerry to vote for you, to swing it that way. And you have been wonderful in moving us forward in lots of things. We, we gave you marching orders for roads and water. Jerry always says to me, don't forget about the stuff in the ground you can't see. Or water. This is before we knew the problems of PFAS that would explode. Um, and sidewalks and parks. And look at this, here we are. So thank you for that. I am sure that the folks over in the Flint area are going to have lots of use for all lawyers. As the city manager. And just go in and buy a set of Flint Coney Dogs for everybody and you will have them. You will have them set. So with that. Return.